Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Pastor Miller, would you please come?
Go call mayor. Good evening. It's a privilege to be here and to open our council meeting tonight with prayer. A while back, at the mayor's prayer breakfast, I had the privilege of sitting at a table and praying with a number of people. At that table was Councilwoman Lynch, and seated with her were Councilman John Cannon's parents. A few months later, Councilman Cannon would become Mayor Cannon, and months later, Councilwoman Lynch would become Mayor Lynch, and I'm still Pastor Cannon. So would you pray with me? Father, thanking you tonight for life and health and strength, thanking you for community, and thanking you for government. As mindful as I drove over here of a passage of scripture, a prophetic scripture that says, "Unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be Wonderful Counselor Mighty God, Prince of Peace." And Lord, I know when it says government upon his shoulder, I know this, it speaks of the government of the kingdom of God. And we know this, that Lord, you have given stewardship of this earth to mankind, and therefore, you have instituted government upon this earth that would be run by mankind, that it would have order, and it would operate in love, because that's the mind and heart of Almighty God. And so we invite your presence, your love, your wisdom, your power and your glory to be present with us tonight as the business of this city is conducted. I'm thankful tonight we're not sitting at the gates of the city outside, but we're sitting here on chairs and comfortable surroundings. But we know this, we need your wisdom, we need your direction, and we need your favor. For the scriptures tell us that unless the Lord guards the city, the watchman stays awake in vain. Thank you for your love and your direction. Thank you for our mayor, and thank you for the city council. And we pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Miller. Nina, would you please call and roll? Councilperson Hearst?
Here.
Councilperson Clam?
Here.
Councilperson Williams?
Here.
Councilperson Gully?
Here.
Councilperson Zilly?
Here.
Mayor Lynch?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilperson Alvarez?
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the approval of the February 4th minutes.
Make a motion to approve?
There's a correction.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second, and then we'll go to the correction. Okay. Colin, you made the motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any corrections?
Yes. On the, under the clerk treasurer's report, towards the bottom, where it says, "Report has been submitted on Gateway and stated the 2020-1095 C," I believe that should be 2019.
They ended it already.
Yep, it's in.
So we have a motion in a second with an amendment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Communication, correspondence, announcements from the mayor. We have a couple of proclamations. Gina, would you please read the first proclamation?
To all who may be present. To all whom these presents-
Nina, would you speak into your mic so that...
I'm bad at talking up.
I mean Gina. Gina and Nina.
To all whom these presents may come, greetings. Whereas the month of March 2020 has been designated as the Disability Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities by the governor of the state of Indiana. Whereas disability is a natural part of human experience, in no way diminishes the right of the individuals with disabilities to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience full in the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society. And whereas family members, friends, and members of the community can play a central role in enhancing the lives of people with disabilities, especially when the family and community are provided with necessary support services, and public and private employers are aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities to be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings, and whereas the goals of this city and state properly including, included providing individuals with the disabilities the opportunities and support to make informed choices and decisions, live in homes and communities where such individuals can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, pursue meaningful and productive lives, contribute to their family, community, state, and nation, have independent friendships and relationships with others, and achieve full inclusion in society. Therefore, I, Sue Lynch, Mayor of the City of Portage, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 as Disability Awareness Month. And the city of Portage and all, and call upon these citizens of Portage to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Portage to seek counsel and input from any person or group with knowledge and expertise in the matters concerning disabilities. In testimony whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the city of Portage in the state of Indiana on the third day of March 2020. Denise, I'm going to have you guys step up.
Would you like to speak? Would you like to speak into the microphone?
I'm Denise Babjack, and I'm from Chasing Dreams. It's a local nonprofit. We're out of Maryville, but we do provide programs throughout northwest Indiana to over 902 families. All of our programs are free. It's all disabilities, all ages. And this is truly an honor to have this signed today by the city of Portage. I grew up here, and it means a lot to me. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, would you please read the next proclamation?
Proclamation to all whom these presents may come, greetings. Whereas Indiana's agribusiness employs over 30,000 year-round seasonal and migrant farmworkers who are key partners for the safety, security, and sustainability of our food supply. Whereas the labor of Indiana's farmworkers contributes billions of dollars annually to the state's economy, agriculture continues to be one of the principal industries in the state. Whereas Indiana honors all those who plant, cultivate, harvest, and process our agricultural products. Whereas March 31st is the birthday of Cesar Chavez, whose dedication of nonviolent organizing for just wages, safe labor conditions, and dignity for women, men, and children who toil in the fields moved him to lead a nationwide peaceful struggle for farmworker justice that continues today. Whereas Protus Inc., an Iowa-based, private, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, has been serving migrant and seasonal farmworkers, immigrants, and others since 1979. Whereas in addition to the offices in Iowa, Protus services contingency in Indiana and Nebraska. Whereas Protus Inc. has, was created to help provide communities with health, educational, and economic opportunities. Whereas to achieve its goals, Protus strives to make its programs accessible to as many members of the community as possible, embrace diversity in staff, recipients of services, program and delivery, and in programs as a whole, develops a culture of respect and acceptance in our organization and general community, creates, evaluates, and maintains programs to meet the changing needs of our communities, and treats all people with an honest, caring, and respectful manner. And whereas the agricultural industry is strong throughout our state, the strength of the industry's workers continue to keep it great. Therefore, I, Sue Lynch, Mayor of the City of Portage, do hereby proclaim the week of March 23rd through the 27th, 2020, as National Farm Workers Awareness Week in the city of Portage, and ask all citizens to join me in observation and celebrate and acknowledge farmworkers across the nation.
Thank you. Is anyone here from the Protus organization? If not, we'll make sure that we mail this to them. And farming is a dangerous occupation. We need to keep all of our farmers, as they start the spring and start working in the fields, safe. So, thank you, Brian, for reading that. We now have a coronavirus presentation by North Shore. Andy, Melitta, and Elena.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. It's great to see you all. I appreciate the invitation here tonight. As you know, the coronavirus is on everyone's mind right now. There's a lot of varying information out in the media, social media, et cetera. So I'm really happy we've got Elena Albanese, who's part of our quality team at North Shore, to come and talk to you a little bit about it, maybe clear up and give everybody a little better understanding of what's going on out there. So Elena?
Thank you. Thanks, Andy. So I just want to make clear that I am not a physician, just to clear the air on that. I do oversee our quality and safety programs at North Shore. One of the things about coronavirus, I think everyone's aware, is that it's new, and so that means there's always updating information. So by far, your best source to use is the CDC. The CDC, and as well as your local and state departments of health, that's who we're using. That's where the best standard of care is right now. Things change on a daily, hourly, weekly basis, depending on what's going on. So it's by far the best guidance, because it'll give you information from a patient perspective, if you are working for the schools, a business, and healthcare as well. So that is by far your best resource, and if you have specific questions, or as things change, maybe in our community, your local and state departments of health will also be very helpful, because they'll know what exactly we're facing compared to maybe somebody in Texas. Transmission, we know of right now is person-to-person via respiratory droplets, and then close contact with patient, or with people who are sick approximately six feet away from a patient. If you get closer than that, you're kind of in that area where you may be, possibly be contagious, that person may be contagious to you. So just being respectful of people right now. If someone says they're sick, don't force them to shake your hand or stand really close to you, things of that nature. And then the biggest thing is hand washing. Make sure you're washing your hands and doing it effectively. It's at least 20 seconds. Get all the parts of your hands, not just the palm area. Make sure you get between your fingers, around your fingernails, or using an alcohol-based hand sanitizer. And so that's by far one of the best ways you're going to reduce your risk of getting any contagious the coronavirus, or the flu, or anything that's contagious right now. We're in that season. So making sure that you're doing that. If you have people that are asking questions, if you feel like you're sick, stay home. Coming into work just exposes either your other coworkers, your employees, the people who are coming in and doing business with you, there may be patients, and maybe other people in the community. If you do get sick, separate yourself from people at home. Don't be on top of each other. Don't rub your face in your pet and then have your significant other do the same thing. Just asking for those contagious particles to transfer from one person to another. If you are visiting your doctor and you feel like you have any concerns about being sick, call ahead. Your doctor is more than willing to answer your questions and making sure that you should be coming in, and that if you do have any concerns, they can address those with you ahead of time as well to make sure you feel prepared for your visit and you're not exposing yourself unnecessarily. Face masks. Do not wear a face mask if you are not sick. That's one of the biggest things right now, is there's only so much of a supply that the world has of different items. So if it's not necessary, don't stockpile, don't use. If you need a face mask, the only reason would be to reduce your cough and your respiratory air that comes out. You just don't want to be doing, spreading contagious particles if you feel sick. If you are well, a face mask is not doing anything compared to you just giving people space. So please don't go and buy all the face masks, even though I'm pretty sure they're already significantly bought. Covering your coughs and your sneezes. Just making sure you're being respectful and you're using good hygiene etiquette. And then cleaning your hands often. Avoiding sharing personal items. If you're using something that you're constantly touching or putting your mouth on, things of that nature. Be more aware of those things. Don't share those with other people. And then any high-touch surfaces. So, for example, I know like a time clock at work, everyone who's coming in, who's punching in, is touching that time clock. Just continually using antibacterial wipes on those types of things, and washing your hands if you are touching those types of things. And then just monitor yourself. If you don't feel well, again, don't put yourself in a situation where you're going to be spreading germs to other people. Try to at best keep that as a minimum. And then just some things that can help educate all people, because there's a lot of information out there right now. Coming from respectful sources is, you know, posting signs to only wear masks for other people as well if they're feeling sick. If you have people at work, if you have people as patients who are coming in, only use a mask if you are actively sick. Having hand sanitizer and soap available, making sure you're not running out of those supplies, keeping those in stock, and so that if people do want to wash their hands multiple times a day, they have access to do that. And then just educating people and making sure that we're talking about things, the best, with the best resources in mind. Again, the CDC, your local and state health departments, and just keeping people educated on the best way to prevent the spread. If we do get to this point, is that you really want to make sure that you are using good hygiene, whether it comes to hand washing, being respectful of people's space, and covering your cough and sneeze. That's going to be the most effective way to make sure that we don't get anyone unnecessarily sick.
I do have a question regarding symptoms. Are the symptoms for the coronavirus any different than the normal flu that people get, or a bad cold?
I don't want to answer that, because I'm not a medical, I'm a pharmacist by trade. It is, that's one of the things, is call your doctor ahead of time. They can triage you over the phone and give you, if you're having certain symptoms and/or travel history, things of that nature, they can take all those risk factors into account and decide if you maybe need to come in first thing in the day or last thing in the day. They can get you help and make sure that you are aware if you're at risk or not.
Thank you.
The individual risk still remains low for individuals in the United States.
Does anybody else have questions? I have sanitizer right here, if anybody would like to use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything you want to add, Andy? Tim, would you like to do your presentation now? Okay. So, Tim, our fire chief has a presentation you would like to make.
The fire department does have an award called the Community Life Saving Award. It is an award that we give to people in the community, residents, that get involved, try to render good care, and in some cases, particularly this one, it actually makes a really big difference. And we have a person that is still here today, and that person is actually a retired firefighter. So it's touched us pretty closely, so we're glad these two individuals were around. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Chief Koticek, and he will go ahead and present the award.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dan Koticek, Assistant Chief EMS. I'll give you a little quick synopsis of kind of what happened on January 28th. On January 28th, our retired captain of 28 years, Captain TJ Chavez, was speedwalking at the YMCA track when he collapsed. An employee of the YMCA notified CPR instructor Brianna Manning he had collapsed and that she was going to call 911. Brianna checked on Captain Chavez, found him in cardiac arrest, and she began CPR immediately. YMCA nurse Sarah Darrow applies the AED at the Y and shocks him one time. Then continues CPR for about one more minute, and Portage Fire arrives. Almost simultaneously, Captain Chavez starts becoming conscious again. The AED at the YMCA is placed by a group effort of the Portage Kiwanis and Portage firefighters who raised the funds for the two AEDs years ago. And the Portage Fire Department still to today maintains and services those AEDs that are in place at the YMCA. As for retired Captain Chavez, he was admitted to the hospital and experienced a full recovery. Tonight, we present Brianna Manning and Sarah Darrow, the Portage Fire Department Community Life Saving Awards, and then also the American Heart Saver Hero Award. To present the award tonight, retired Captain TJ Chavez and his wonderful wife, Dawn.
Yeah, I'd just like to be a little bit of an advocate about CPR and AEDs and how important they are. If you don't learn CPR, go and enroll in a class. Learn, when you go in a building, find out where the AEDs are. If you don't know how to use them, somebody might know that's around you. But be aware of where they are in your building, because you never know when a loved one, an employee, brother, sister will go down and you might need to do it. So, and it doesn't take long to learn this stuff, but you never know when you're going to use it, and I'm a living testament to that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank Brianna and Sarah and the Portage Fire Department that I now can celebrate in April, our 42nd, wedding anniversary that almost didn't happen. Thank you.
If we can just finish up, it should be noted that this is the third cardiac arrest saved that I'm aware of, that the YMCA staff or patrons have accomplished by having AEDs there. So as Captain Chavez did state, they do work, they are out there, and thank you very much for the two that intervened and saved one of our retired people. So we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
I'd also like to second what the chief just said. As a board member of the YMCA, I couldn't be prouder of that organization and what they do for our community. I mean, they change lives, they affect lives, and now clearly they save lives. And I mean, they're such a benefit to this community, and I know we're not tired of clapping, but if we can have a round of applause for the staff.
And I just want to add that members of the city are going to be undergoing CPR training. Fire Department is going to be training several members of the, several of our employees next Friday. So we will be training our employees. We did have an incident at my church where one of our dear friends, who was a city council person at the time, passed out off of the pew during services one day, and we had the fire department come and check our AED. Our batteries were no good. I mean, they came, they trained us, and now our church family is trained on that. So I can't say enough about that. You never know when you're going to be in a situation where you're going to need that. And the fire department is here to help us learn that CPR. So anybody that hasn't signed up for our class yet, it's going to be next Friday. So, thank you, guys. That's a great, great thing. So we have the clerk treasurer's report.
I have the annual finance report. I sent you guys a lot of reports through that box. It's been uploaded to Gateway. It's not showing yet. I'm having trouble with the text file with the disbursement side. So I'm calling with the vendor. The temporary loan, Resolution 20-03, I have. And this is backdated to January 31st. And then I also have a transfer at the request of Tim Seis.
So I'd ask for Dan to read, if I may, the temporary loan transfer.
Thank you, sir. Resolution 20-03, a resolution authorizing temporary inter-fund loans. Whereas the following temporary inter-fund loans are necessary for the purpose of maintaining cash operating balances in the funds herein named. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Portage, Indiana, that the clerk treasurer is hereby authorized to make the following temporary loans. Such loans to be secured by a pledge of revenues to be received, which are not otherwise allocated and to be repaid on or before January 31st of 2020. And those are from the date of, or all four are from January 31st, 2020, to this cumulative liability physical damage fund from the cable TV fund in the amount of $250,000. The second one, from the cumulative capital development fund, from the, excuse me, to CCD, from the cable TV fund in the amount of $150,000. The third, to Paul Penn, from the EDIT fund, in the amount of $100,000. And the third, to CLPD, also from cable TV, in the amount of $65,000.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Transfer Resolution 2020-04, Scott?
Yeah. Brian, would you take that, please?
Resolution 20-4, a resolution transferring funds within the budget of the Fire Department and Cable TV Fund, whereas it is now necessary to transfer appropriation balances within the 2020 budget of the Fire Department and Cable TV Fund. Now be it resolved that the common council of the city of Portage approves the following appropriation transfer- appropriation transfer within the 2020 budget for the Fire Department and Cable TV Fund. Appropriation of, from Fire Department telephones in the amount of $2,396 to Fire Department Capital. Transfer from Fire Department Uniform Allowance in the amount of $4,800 to Fire Department Capital. And transfer from Fire Department Medical in the amount of $1,667.55 to Cable TV.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports from standing committees, Budget and Finance Committee.
Debbie will take that.
Okay. Thank you. We've had a couple of casual and informal sessions to fact find. Some of those things included, where did we end 2019? How many invoices that were incurred and expected to be paid in 2019 that were actually carried over into 2020? The impact of the $2.6 million decrease of the 2020 budget by the state after the budget had already been adopted. Taking a hard look at the complete vendor list as to who, what for, future expenditures. This would also include the possibility of consolidating some vendors for better pricing recommendations to save money. When the bond bank monies are to be paid back, what our actual income is going to be, contracts, do we have them when they expire, how the tax abatements have been handled or not, and other things, and the list goes on. This has been an increasingly time-intensive process. With the more information we discover, the more questions we have. We're also trying to get a more definitive picture of what our actual shortfalls may be, and whether or not money will possibly have to be borrowed, and that is something we do not know right now. It's an extremely important undertaking, and all hands have been on deck, not only the Budget Committee, the mayor, the Clerk Treasurer's office, our city attorney, our community development. Everyone is looking into this. We're fully vested in this to get answers and to keep moving forward in a positive way. I commend everybody that's trying to do this, because it's a lot. And lastly, I just want to say, this has been an inherited challenge, to put it nicely. But we're working, and we're working very hard. We know the needs and concerns of the various departments. Please believe we're doing our very best. Please be patient, and it's just taking longer than I think any of us thought it was going to. So, and we will keep you abreast as things go forward.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your due diligence and everyone's due diligence. Obviously, this budget and finance issue is a high priority, and I know we're working hard to get it resolved, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. You've been working really hard at that. I know I've been seeing a lot of you. Ordinance committee, introduction of ordinances.
Colin.
We have two ordinances to introduce tonight. One is on the agenda, one did not make the agenda, so we'll do a first reading on one. We'll start with the various personnel matters. This was read at a previous meeting, so I'll do a second reading. Ordinance number 2020-2, an ordinance of the City of Portage, Indiana, amending Sections 62-27, 62-29, 62-30 subsection A, and 62-31 subsection B of the City of Portage Municipal Code. Let the record reflect, this has been read in full with a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance number 2020-02.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just want to point out, from the ordinance committee meeting, a few changes that the ordinance committee made coming to the council. So, in section one, you'll see we added day after Thanksgiving. This is typically a city holiday. The mayor has to declare it every year. So, we went ahead, instead of having the mayor declare that, we'll make sure the employees know they have that as a holiday every year. So, we've added that to the ordinance. The other change is in section three. We were reading through the code at the ordinance committee meeting. The funeral leave days, the way it was previously worded, would leave the discretion to, the department had to decide if an employee would be awarded the three full days. They could award less. We felt at the ordinance committee that it should be three days regardless, but it must be on an employee's scheduled workday, that you can't take a funeral leave day on a day that you're not scheduled to work. It would have to be on a scheduled workday.
So, you may only get two.
I'm sorry?
So, it only may be two.
Correct. And, but it could be a maximum of three, depending on when the funeral would take place. And I am seeing the version that is in Dropbox, it looks like there's an erroneous section in here. It's section four, which has to do with something I think that is unrelated to this ordinance. Let me look here and see what it is. We may need to amend this real quick, just to see what that actually is. Is it, what is it, 62-30? One second, sorry. I don't know what that is. Actually, that is correct. This is the portion that would, where the department have, would have the authority to grant less time for funeral leave. The ordinance committee felt that it should be three days for a death in the immediate family, which is defined in the ordinance, and not up to the department head's discretion. But it must be used on an employee's workday.
And also, Colin, did you state Merton Luther King Day in there?
Yes, that's in the ordinance from the original meeting. We added day after Thanksgiving to this.
Are there any further discussions? Is this the first reading, Colin?
This was second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We have a second ordinance. This was brought to the ordinance committee by the, by Chief Sosby, so we'll do a first reading on this, and we will consider this at our April meeting. Ordinance number 2020-2, an ordinance of the City of Portage, Indiana, amending Sections 46-43, 46-45, and 46-49A of the City of Portage Municipal Code. Be it, and it is hereby ordained by the common council of the City of Portage, Indiana, as follows. Section one, ordinance amendment of section 46-43. Section 46-43 shall be amended by deleting the section in its entirety and adding the following new section. The Merritt Commission shall have the proper, shall have the power to appoint and remove members of the Fire Department, except for a member of an upper-level policymaking position, which is considered to be any member of the Fire Administration. The mayor shall appoint and may remove a member in an upper-level policymaking position. Section two, ordinance amendment of section 46-45. Section 46-45 shall be amended by deleting the section in its entirety and adding the following new section, and I'm only going to read the portions that are changing from the existing code. Subsection A, to be appointed to the Fire Department, an applicant must be a citizen of the United States, a high school graduate or equivalent, and at least 21 years of age, but under 36 years of age at the time of hire. An applicant that will turn 21 years of age at any time the new list is in effect shall be eligible to be placed on the eligibility list for hiring. Section three, ordinance amendment of section 46-49 subsection A. Section 46-49 subsection A shall be amended by deleting the section in its entirety and adding the following new section. When a vacancy in rank occurs, the Merritt Commission shall certify to the chief the member with the highest score on the eligibility list for the particular rank. The chief shall immediately fill the vacancy from the appropriate list with the member having the highest score. The Merritt Commission shall be notified of the promotion at the next regular meeting. Let the record reflect, this has been read in its entirety.
That's the first reading.
Yes, sir. We might have this in section there. I don't know if you caught this or not, but under section 46-5, 46-45? I skipped that piece. All right. You want to read it? I can read it, sure. So, you're right, there were two other changes in there. No other person may be appointed, reappointed, or reinstated in the Fire Department if he or, if he, we'll want to change that to he or she, has a felony conviction on his record. Applications for appointment or reappointment shall be filled with the Merritt Commission, and the applicant must provide satisfactory proof of the date and place of his birth. Passage of preliminary examinations deemed necessary by the commission shall be required of all applicants to determine general aptitude for service as a member of the department. These examinations shall include, at a minimum, a written aptitude test, a physical agility test, and a swim test, and shall be conducted according to the procedures adopted by the commission. The results of the preliminary examination shall be filed with the commission, and if an applicant lacks the proper qualifications as evidence by failure of any of the preliminary examinations, the commission shall reject the applicant. Upon passage of the preliminary examinations, the commission shall then rate the applicant according to physical condition, mental alertness, character, habits, and reputation pursuant to an interview process with each applicant that successfully passes preliminary examination or by any methods adopted by the commission. The applicant shall have a minimum passing score of 70% to be considered eligible for hiring. The commission, which determines the passing score for the preliminary examination, shall post an eligibility list by the order of scores of the applicants. This list shall be certified to the Board of Public Works and Safety. And then section C, all eligible applicants may remain on the list for one year from the date of certification. After one year, a person must reapply as an applicant. At any time that a vacancy occurs in the Fire Department, the commission, upon written request by the chief of the Fire Department, shall appoint the applicant having the highest score on the eligibility list to fill the vacancy. A probationary member is not entitled to a disciplinary hearing under section 46-50. That applicant shall be enrolled as a member of the department, provided he is still of good character and passes the required physical examination. So, now I have read the full ordinance.
So, this, we can't do anything? This is first reading?
I think it would be helpful, chief, we're not going to have another ordinance meeting on this to maybe explain what the changes are.
Okay. Pretty simple. The section 46-43, it listed in there only assistant chiefs and the chief, so we basically took that section out and added our division chiefs, because they are exempt employees, so they do not fall under the mayor board rules and regs and all that kind of thing. So, we felt it was easier just to say whoever is considered a member of the Fire Administration, regardless of what name they are, we know who the exempt employees are that are part of the Fire Administration. So, any questions on that? The next section is, I think we've done this, we just had some confusion in the past that if an applicant picks up an application and they're 20 years old, that whether or not we can give them that application, and we just wanted to clean up the language so it was really clear that, yes, as long as they're going to turn 21 within that year, they can pick up an application and be eligible. Okay? The next section, section B, we added pursuant to an interview process with each applicant that successfully passes the preliminary examinations or by any methods adopted by the commission, and we also added the applicant shall have a minimum passing score of 70% to be considered eligible for the list. Basically, what's happened in the past is, once they pass the preliminary, those three preliminary things, they could go into the interview process, put their feet up on the table, and really not care what they're doing, or don't even answer any question in the interview process, and they still were being put on our list. Made no sense to me. So, our promoted people have to have a 70% before they can move on, and those are people that have been here 20 years a plus. So, it seemed logical to have a minimum score for new applicants to have to achieve before they get put in on our list. So, that's basically what this does. We will work with the mayor board and the union to help develop the scoring process and all that, which we already have in place. We just need to figure out how it's going to apply to 70%, okay? The other is, right now, our list is two years. We think that's too long. We're streamlining the process this year. We're literally taking applications that have been on file with us for over two years, and so much information has changed, so much has changed in the applicants' lives. It's just not very effective. So, it's a little bit more work to do it every year, but that's how we're going to get the best possible people here, so we want to do it every year, and that was the change. Pretty simple. The last one is the vacancy. This was done in conjunction with the union. The way it was written there, it said, within 30 days, this is under section 4649. Well, you guys don't have copies of it, right?
It didn't.
Okay. Section 4649, it used to say, within 30 days, the chief may recommend to the board that a vacancy be filled, at which time, the member with the highest score will then be certified by the board. So, the interpretation there is that if I wanted to, I could wait 28 days for a new list to get established, because I don't like the person on the other list, so I could, you know, basically keep somebody from being promoted. That's typically not the way we've done things, right when there's a vacancy, we promote right away, but if a chief wanted to take advantage of this role, they probably could. So, everybody felt it was just a good idea just to strike it, and we basically just said, the chief shall immediately fill the vacancy from the appropriate list with the member having highest score. The Merritt Commission shall be notified of the promotion at the next regular meeting, which is what our process has been for the last 20 years, probably. Okay? So, basically, just putting on paper what we've already been doing. Okay? There should be one other thing. The, I don't even know what that needs to go, the name change between division chief and battalion chief?
That will be part of the salary ordinance amendment. I think we're going to take that up next month, right, Debbie?
Yeah, we're waiting on it.
Yeah, we're waiting on other things.
Yes, so we can do it all at once. So, it's not just you that's affected, it's another.
So, we're going to take that up at the next meeting. Okay. I'm assuming that, I mean, that's a housecleaning thing, just a logistical thing as far as what, how they're worded. I'm assuming I can move forward with the name change, and we can, the mayor board has approved it, the union has been on board with it, and it was approved at the Board of Works meeting, so.
Just basically.
The name change is a formality on the.
It's basically a title change, correct?
Yeah, there's no job description change whatsoever. We have, for some reason, been calling our division chiefs, or I'm sorry, our battalion chiefs, division chiefs, and I don't know why, I don't know if it was just because it was more difficult to have to attend a bunch of meetings and get it done the right way, I don't know. I can't answer that question. But they are battalion chiefs, their job description is that of a battalion chief, just for some reason, we've been calling them division chiefs. I don't know why. So, we just want to call them what they are. So, all right? But no job description change, no difference in exempt status and all that. So, all right?
Yep.
Any questions?
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Ways and Means Committee.
Pat.
Knowing that there's time.
Okay.
Strategic Plan.
Ferdinand.
Yes, excuse me. So, the biggest issue regarding the Strategic Planning Committee at this time is the census. We had a meeting last week with Mr. Gonzalez, our Public Information Officer, along with various other members of the community, Mrs. Simpson from the chamber, Mrs. Lundstrom from the trustees office, along with Mr. Elliott from the U.S. Census Bureau, basically telling us that the census is coming up, and trying to stress to us, to stress to the community, the level of importance that the census is bringing. It's important to get everyone counted funding-wise. Every uncounted individual is worth a certain amount of dollars, funding-wise, times 10. You only do the census every 10 years, and so that amount, times 10, per person, really has an impact on the amount of federal funding that the city will receive over the next decade. There are what's called LRS, which are Low Response Score Zones in the city. Certain areas are historically undercounted, underrepresented, and so it's important that as a committee, as the Complete Count Committee, that we reach out to those areas, that we go into them. The way the process works is that each individual will receive four notifications to respond to the Census Bureau. If they have not responded upon their fourth notification, they will receive a knock on the door from one of the census takers, and hopefully, we will get a result from that. Let's see. That's about it. I mean, we have various subcommittees, the faith community, the healthcare community, the school community, city government, so we're all going to try and come together. Of course, funding for this marketing campaign is relatively non-existent, so it's going to be up to us to determine how to get our message to the community, but we're working on that over the next couple of months, and be on the lookout for information from the Census Bureau. And also, if I haven't said it already, 2020census.gov, if I'm, yes. Yeah, that's all I have for that.
All right, thank you, Ferdinand, for your effort and work in this area. It is extremely, extremely important that everybody be counted in our city. I mean, we're talking maybe millions of dollars that could just go away because people didn't respond and we didn't count accurately. So, please keep that in mind.
Okay, reports of city officials, and we're going to start with streets, with Randy. Randy, would you like to introduce your new employee to? Randy, would you like to introduce your new employee to?
Oh, yes, uh, Mayor, uh, so- Uh, well, I emailed, uh, most of my report here, in, uh, sanitation department, uh, we took in eight-hundred-and-one tons of trash, two-hundred-and-nineteen tons of recycling, ninety, or thirty-one tons of dumpsters, and that, that totaled to about one-thousand-fifty-two tons. It brought us to a diversion rate of almost twenty-one percent. Uh, we took about a hundred residents came and visited the property or to visit the department, dropping off various things like yard waste, e-waste, and debris, issued thirty-four new yard passes for the month of February. Uh, we do have a yard pass, uh, policy down there, you gotta be a portage resident, fill out a little application, you get a free yard pass, uh, you could take advantage of, uh, the compost down there, dropping off e-waste, taking advantage of, um, the, um, compost, uh, you could drop off your grass, stuff like that, so, but, uh, we highly recommend that, uh, we get people sneaking in from other municipalities trying to take advantage of, uh, portage and, uh, its services to the public, and, uh, we discourage that. So, uh, we processed ninety-four bulk item charges, two of them then were disputed, uh, we've, uh, delivered, replaced, or delivered to new residents about fifty-five toters throughout the city, and we only had five reported mailboxes supposedly hit by plows, so, but, uh, that was good. Um, we had three winter events for February, which resulted in about twenty-four-hundred, uh, employee hours to clear, uh, snow and salt the roadways. Um, I did include in my report a historical record of the salt orders for the portage of, uh, city of portage. Now, salt, I wanted to just give a little fact here, at thirty degrees, one pound of salt will melt, uh, forty-six pounds of ice. So as the temperatures get colder, for instance, when it gets down to twenty degrees, um, one pound of salt will only melt nine pounds of ice. So, you can see in our historical, I'm just, I just had enough his, information to go back like eight years. So we had a high year of, for instance, in twenty-fourteen to twenty-fifteen season, uh, the s- the contracted amount that we asked the state, asked for, for tonnage of salt was six-thousand tons. We used fifty-five-hundred that year, which resulted in, uh, the taxpayers paying four-hundred-and-three-thousand dollars just in salt. So, um, one year was really low, where we only asked the, um, state to include, you know, in our, their, that salt bid, which was, uh, four-thousand tons, and, uh, we got away with thirty-two-hundred that year, which was about a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. This past year, the twenty-nineteen, or the twenty-nineteen-twenty season, uh, last March, we always enter into the state bid for salt, and that's through Indiana One, and, uh, we asked for four-thousand tons. In that s- in that contracted amount, you're allowed, you're, the contract wants you to meet eighty percent of that obligation, and we met that obligation, we got that thirty-two, that, to that thirty-two-hundred ton, and this, the taxpayers of portage will be seeing a bill for a hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars this year. Um, at the end of this month, we're gonna re-enter into that state contract, and we're gonna ask for another four-thousand tons, because I took the averages throughout the eight years, and, um, we used about forty-five-hundred, forty-six-hundred every year. Average. So, average. So, salt is really important. It, uh, melts ice, which is on the roads, it provides, uh, our first responders, uh, with, uh, safe roads, it provides our residents with safe roads, and, um, we just asked that residents, uh, adhere to the snow policy. When there's two inches or more on that, uh, street, get your cars off so we could plow it and curb it out, and, and also salt it. So, um, I looked at the projection of, uh, March, and it looks like we're gonna be really good, so, but, uh, no more salt.
Your mouth, God's ears.
This season, so, alright? But if, uh, any of you have any questions regarding the salt bid?
I have one que- I have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, when you look at the comparison of what you allotted for and what you actually used, and I know your space is limited, is that difference that's left over taken into account when you put that bid out for the next year?
Uh, give me an example, which is the-
So, okay, so, we'll just look at right now, so if we, if we ask for four-thousand ton-
Yes.
And we've only used thirty-two-hundred, there'd be eight-hundred left. So is that-
We're, we're done with it, we've met our obligation with the contract.
But when you bid it for the next year, do you take into account what you have left over, or you just automatically start fresh?
Uh, usually we try to fill the barn, which fits about fifteen-hundred tons, so we start that off with the year-
Okay.
Plus we order our four-thousand.
Okay.
So it's always, if you really wanna see where the barn is filled at, that's zero, and then we use.
Okay.
So we always try and fill the barn at the end of the season, so we're, we're good when it comes to November, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Randy, I have, uh, a comment, I'm gonna be reaching out to you here in the next couple of weeks, I wanna get a meeting together with yourself and the mayor and, uh, the city attorney, and we're gonna discuss a few things.
Okay.
Alright?
Yes.
So I'll be reaching out to you.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Randy, good job.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna jump around here, 'cause sometimes it goes through the list and then there's people that are at the end, so I'm gonna have Lori do hers, 'cause she loves to get up here and talk anyhow, right Lori? That's her unfavorite thing.
Hello. Uh, just a quick few things about the parks. Um, we have our grant project at IG, our lighting portion and fencing portion are complete at this point, and they are finishing up some finishing touches on the building renovation. And we have a few more things we have to do this summer. Uh, regarding upcoming programs and events, um, April and May are gonna be very busy. We have our spring craft show, our mother and son event, our twentieth year of our annual senior health fair, and our spring wine and canvas event coming up. We're also planning for our summer market and all of our summer festivities, and the Fourth of July, we're working on already. Regarding sports, our youth soccer and adult softball registrations are currently open, and our volleyball registration will open on April first. Uh, you can visit our website for registration information. Um, and we just put the order in to have our water meters put on, uh, April first, so we're gearing up for our busy season. Any questions?
Yeah. Good job, Lori.
Good job, Lori.
Um, Chief Candiano? I did, I wrote it down. I did!
Good evening, how's everybody doing?
Good. Good, Chief, how you doing?
Good, good. Alright, uh, calls for service for, uh, February, we're, uh, two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-four, up a little bit over last year, um, I don't know if that's got to do with the, I know it's not beautiful out, but it's definitely been a mildish winter, so I don't know if that's got something to do with it, but, um, a little bit up from last year. Um, I would like to give you guys a report on, uh, where our people are at. We've got two in the academy, and they're about halfway through, just got a status report from the academy today, said they're doing very well, so we're excited to, uh, get them through and get them back, so, uh, probably about seven weeks or so, I think, uh, mid-April they'll be graduating. And we have three in field training, but, uh, one is about ready to be released, probably, uh, in the next shift or so, uh, I don't wanna say it here, 'cause we wanna surprise them a little bit, but it's coming. So, uh, and then the other two are getting real close, so, uh, yeah, we're, we're finally getting, getting our numbers back to where they need to be. Uh, on the bad side, we have one officer that's out, uh, with a knee injury that he incurred, uh, chasing a subject that was fleeing, so, um, still kinda waiting on a status report for that, so, um, waiting to see what happens there, so. I sent out the crime stats from last year, did you guys all get those? Any chance to look at those? Okay.
Very nice.
Like I said, when, when what I told you guys, the, the, or in the report I gave you, the, the thing that I was most happy about was, you know, the numbers are gonna fluctuate, population changes, uh, the amount of people that come into the city, which we can all attest to, you know, at three o'clock on a, uh, middle of the day going down Willow Creek at six, there's a ton of people in the city, so, I think those are kinda hard to compare each year, because you get more people coming in, the, you know, the, the housing developments are growing, so, um, that being said, the thing that I was the most happy about were the, the more serious crimes that are in there, you know, your homicides, burglaries, robberies, things like that, almost all of those were solved between our patrol division and our detective bureau, um, and then crimes from the year before that are going to court, that have gone to court in the last year, a lot of convictions, plea agreements out of those, so, um, that's the stuff that I was really excited about, that, you know, it's the, the quality of the work that's being done, so, um, but I did send you the numbers if you were curious about those, so, so those are in there. Uh, do you guys have any questions about the, the crime stats while, before we go next thing, or? Okay. Uh, the one thing that was a little alarming to me was the, uh, that I put in there was, uh, six officers were assaulted last year, and we had eleven that were injured as a result of, you know, responding to calls, uh, struggling with people, things like that. Uh, you know, that, that, that's concerning, it seems to be a, a growing trend. Um, this year we've already had, uh, three officers that have been injured, it's only February. We've had, uh, multiple vehicle pursuits that have come into our city from other jurisdictions, um, we had a squad car that was, uh, got a bunch of damage from a drunk driver that rammed our squad car trying to get away, so, those are the things that are concerning to me, just the, the growing trend of how people are reacting to the police, so, um, not necessarily a community thing, I think it's a nationwide thing, but those are some of the struggles that, that we're dealing with, um, unfortunately, that seems to be on the way up, so. So now I've depressed you all, I will, uh, talk about a couple of good things. Um, a bunch of us went to the, uh, Clean Cities Workshop in Michigan City, was it last week, uh, learned about alternative fuels and things, so, got some good information, uh, from that, I think we're gonna be meeting with some of you guys about some of the stuff that we learned about there, so, um, lots of different ways that cars can run that I did not know about, so it was, uh, kind of interesting. So, another thing that I was, uh, pretty happy with, I'm still here thunder, but we did the job fair, or career fair at the, uh, high school, the fire department was there with us, and, basically I think it was the juniors and seniors all had a opportunity to come around, uh, multiple, you know, trades, um, different businesses, us, fire department, uh, state police, you know, all just different organizations, and I was pretty impressed with the interest of the students, um, you know, the questions they asked, how they were engaged, it wasn't just like a, uh, hour of, you know, goof-off time, it was-
Yeah.
Yeah, very, uh, very good questions, very, I, I, I thought they were very involved, so it was, it was nice to see the youth, you know, taking their, their future serious, so. Um, then lastly, uh, it's kinda my thing here, is, uh, every, every meeting I'm gonna try to tell you about some good things that have happened, you know, talk about an officer or two, and generally it's gonna be regarding an arrest or solving a crime or something like that, but I just wanna tell you about two incidents that happened, uh, actually in the last week or so. Um, so last week we had, uh, two officers that were patrolling the neighborhood, they saw an elderly lady fall down in the snow, um, they went in and started talking to her, just seemed like maybe she had had, you know, sustained some type of a head injury, called the fire department out, she was real concerned about going to the hospital because she was by herself and she was worried about getting a ride home. So, after she gets treated, she calls us, uh, one of our officers, Lieutenant Jolly, went out, picked her up, gave her a ride back home, shoveled her snow so she wouldn't fall down again, um, just little things like that, you know, you talk about the crime and all that stuff we're dealing with, but I thought it was pretty cool when I heard about that. And then we had another one the other day, um, a disabled gentleman called, said that his caretaker had not made it home, he didn't have any water, didn't have any food, so he called the police. Um, we'll see you call, right? So, uh, we showed up, uh, found him, Officer Smith and Howard, Officer Smith, who's one of our rookies, I'll, I'll add, uh, one of our guys that's in field training right now. Uh, so they arrived, they ended up heating up a meal for him in the microwave, got him a jug of water, got ahold of some people that were gonna come out within the hour to take care of him, so, um, again, I like to-
Nice.
I like to, you know, give some kudos to those people for some of those things they did, so.
Thank you. Thank them.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, I'm actually going to have, uh, Assistant Chief Kevin DeYoung give the report today, so, uh, be nice to him, okay? He's got a lot of information to give you tonight, alright?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so, February in review, we did have three-hundred-and-forty-one calls, uh, that averages about twelve calls per shift. Uh, we did have some significant calls, I think we've called at least three helicopters in the month of, uh, February to transport critical patients to more definitive care. Uh, part of that also, we're trialing, uh, rock corneal, uh, paralytic, uh, we're the only department in our, uh, medical control that's allowed to use it right now, we're trialing it, uh, this is the second time that we've used it with success, uh, and we were able to secure somebody's airway and protect it till they got to the hospital. Uh, so, Chief Kodecheck headed that up, like I said, as of right now, we're the only ones that, under our medical direction, doing it, uh, and we've had great success with it so far. Also in the month of February, we've had, uh, we did six-hundred-and-fifty-three hours of training. Uh, February tenth, we started a new hire, I believe he was here, but had to take off, uh, Robert Foster, he was actually a lateral transfer from E Chicago, uh, so he worked there for, I believe, two years before coming to us, he's already been on the job for a couple of years, so he's got the experience, he's actually already been, uh, through the fire academy that we send our guys to, so, in April, when we have to send others to the academy, uh, he does not have to go, he's already been through that, so we don't lose him for that two weeks, he, he's, uh, able to keep on working through that. At the same time, we're processing two more hires, uh, to replace Chief Boge, who, uh, actually retired as of today, uh, Lieutenant Dowling, who's retiring, uh, within the next two weeks. So we have two more in process now, uh, both of them will have to go to the fire academy, which is set to start on April sixth. Uh, with the retirement of Chief Boge, I, we were actually able to make some promotions today, uh, Lieutenant Andy Hyman, uh, was promoted from lieutenant to battalion chief, uh, to take Chief Boge's spot. Engineer Chris Alexander was promoted to lieutenant to take, uh, Lieutenant Hyman's spot, and then, uh, Master Firefighter Paramedic Joe Siegel was promoted to engineer, uh, to then take Chris Alexander's spot, so, uh, we, we're able to make those three promotions today.
Nice.
Uh, like the mayor said earlier, we did begin hosting, uh, CPR classes for the city employees, we've hosted two already, uh, we do have another one coming up Friday, so hopefully we get, uh, more of the employees trained, as we saw tonight, uh, CPR makes a huge difference, AEDs make a huge difference, so, uh, that's been going on. Starting tomorrow night, our promotional testing for the new list, that'll take effect in June, it goes for a year, uh, we start that tomorrow night with the written test, I believe we have twenty-three? Twenty-one. Uh, twenty-one people testing for, uh, that's our engineer position, or lieutenant position, or captain, that's our mayor positions that we had talked about in that ordinance, uh, that, that process starts tomorrow night. Uh, we are also working on a hiring process, uh, with the hires that we've done, we've actually exhausted our list, so we're working on a hiring process, we were due anyway, uh, to go into effect, uh, basically we'll have a hire as soon as the list goes into effect. We're looking to take app- applications, uh, in the April-May area, uh, we haven't nailed it down, but we're, we're hoping as soon as possible to start that process going. Also, I believe you guys received the report, uh, this evening or late afternoon, on the Medicaid reimbursement. Uh, so, this was a project headed up by Chief Kodecheck, it started back in two thousand and eleven, uh, Medicaid was underpaying and under-reimbursing us for, uh, ambulance runs and stuff like that. Uh, so through that, uh, we've received for, actually, two thousand and seventeen, uh, sixty-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-five dollars and ten cents, uh, which goes into our EMS reverting fund. Uh, altogether, since, uh, the, we started with the reimbursement stuff, we've gotten, uh, recovered over one-point-five million dollars, uh, from, from the, uh, Medicaid program. With that, like I said, it does go into our EMS reverting fund, uh, because of that, uh, the ambulance that we're working on, uh, getting remounted, we've been able to purchase that through that, without having to go into our budget, without having to come to the city and ask for more money, uh, so that, we're working on, uh, possibly purchasing a command vehicle from that, and then just our EMS stuff, uh, the large purchases, heart monitors, cops, different stuff like that, so, by that program, we've been allowed to, uh, better our service without, like I said, uh, putting undue stress on our budget or coming for you, to you guys for any more funds, so. Uh, finally, I believe, uh, Union President Scott Klein handed you guys, uh, envelope, uh, for the Fire Ops one-on-one, uh, so it's a program that's sponsored by our IFF, the, the National Union, uh, what it is, is May thirtieth, they're gonna bring you guys out, uh, kinda run you through, uh, crash course in firefighting, uh, so, like I said, you guys receive those envelopes there, uh, and you guys should be getting more info on that, uh, in the future, so. Unless you have any questions for me, that's all I've got for you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we really encourage you to get involved with that Fire Ops, um, you know, it's easy to kinda believe and really think you know what we do and what we go through, uh, but once you, you done all that equipment, you really start working with all the equipment, that equipment, you're going to find the simplest tasks are not as easy as you think they are when you're wearing gloves and about 40 pounds of gear and then another 40 pound pack on your back. So, we encourage you to come on out there. We'll have plenty of our people there keeping an eye on you for safety reasons and all that kind of thing. So, it, hopefully, it'll help you understand a little bit more on what we do. So, and I should note one other thing, the report you got in front of you, where we've bought in 1.5 something million dollars through the Medicaid reimbursement. It should be noted that not until recently has some of that money actually been coming back to us. That money was disappearing, we had no idea where it was going. So, the last two reimbursements that we have gotten back, we're able to buy brand-new ambulances with one of the reimbursements. And then, like Assistant Chief DeYoung said, we'll be purchasing a new incident command vehicle. So, those are things that we don't have to come to you and say, "Find us the money somewhere." So, I know what you guys are going through. We appreciate your position and this is just how we're able to hopefully try to take care of things without burdening it too much. I can't guarantee, we're never going to ask you for money, okay? But, what's that?
All them services, used to be free, the ambulance services. They used to call and have quite the clinic going out of that ambulance out of tax dollars.
Yeah, our ambulance service has been free for probably 30 years, but a lot of them before.
Well, Chief Pfeifer and I changed that ordinance, and now it's a fee if they call. That's why that collection's coming from the Medicaid. It used to be free, they never used to get billed.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So, do you have any questions about that? Okay, if not, thank you very much. And thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Community Development Director AJ.
Good evening, AJ.
I've presented a written report to you, and I promised I would keep it short. So, I want to highlight just a couple of things. In the department, in that report, there was an item that regarded the Transportation Resource Oversight Committee. What I think was really important to report is that we were successful in securing another $299,000 for projects that are near completion or about to start in the city of Portage. So, those were additional funds to previously secured federal funds. So, that's some good news. And then, many things, many positive things happened at the last redevelopment commission meeting. We do have a consulting engineer on staff now, so we're going to be able to approve the items that are, or work through and review and approve the items that are presented to the plan commission, so that's some good news. We are, we were, last month I reported that we had, that we were posting for a city planner position. We had six applicants, and we'll begin the interview process this month. When we bring that person on board, we'll quickly get to the business of updating the comprehensive plan, downtown plan, and the other number of plans that we need to really focus on, so that we're prepared and always moving forward to pursue the next round of federal funding that's out there. The next call for a lot of the projects at NERC will be later this year in September, the Northwest Indiana Regional Plan Commission. I think exciting to all of you, many of you have been on the council, have never had a meeting in City Hall. We, the redevelopment commission, at their meeting last Thursday, they did approve their budget for 2020, and within that was $50,000 to start the work for architectural services, for schematic design, and to develop a cost estimate. The cash, the cash position of the redevelopment commission is very weak right now until the June tax draw, but there is enough money in place right now to move forward with schematic design and budgeting, so that when that June tax draw does come, the commission will be in a position to consider next steps and opportunities to remodel the former fire station. The last thing I would point out or mention is that Mayor and I, and a few other city staff are going to be meeting with representatives from NICD, the Northwest Indiana Regional Development Authority, their transit district, or the Transit Development District Committee in the town of Agden Dunes, to talk about development around the Portage Agden Dunes train station. As you know, NICD recently received word that they've received federal funding to move to the engineering phase of the project. So, we will be meeting with them tomorrow evening to talk about NICD's plans and many other, many things that are circulating all at one time, whether it's NICD's project, the RDA in this Transit Development District, or some of the, some of the House bills that are being entertained currently downstate, that will just provide another, another means or vehicle to really develop the areas in and around the train stations. That concludes my report, unless there is something that you have as a question.
There's a lot going on, and AJ has been really busy.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, is our Barb from the Marina. We didn't forget you, Barb.
Waiting for me to go last, but I'm just sweating.
I'm sorry. We'll make you go first next time.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Barb.
Gina, if you could pass one of these down.
No problem.
Thank you. So, for 2020, it looks like it's going to be a pretty good season at the Marina, I hope. We're collecting money by leaps and bounds on a daily basis. We have people coming from Michigan City and from Hammond, looking at slips, so hopefully it'll be a great year for us. Some other news, we sponsored a portion of the Fish On event for February 22nd to 23rd, and the response was really good, according to Nancy at the chamber. She gave me a really good table right up at the front, and she said that 690 people came through and paid for that event. So, it was really, really quite successful. Of course, most of the business was on Saturday, and then Sunday, you had the people coming, you know, like after church for a couple of hours. But, she talked about maybe doing one day next year instead of doing the two days. But, we participate, the Port Authority participates in that every year, and it's been a really good event for us to get our name out on the street as far as the city goes. I cast out a little handout for everybody. The Clean Marina Roundtable is still on for March 19th, and it starts at 9:30 a.m. at the lakefront. I don't have an agenda yet, so I wanted to give you a little heads up on, you know, as far as some of the things that they may be talking about. Once again, it's a collaboration between ITAM and the Lake Michigan Coastal Program, which is affiliated with the DNR. They're going to serve luncheon, and as soon as, as soon as I know who's coming and who's not, I'll let them know so that, you know, everybody can be included in the lunch. We're also in the process down at the Marina of receiving some quotes. We want to update the facilities a little bit this year with either two or three shelters for people that, you know, they can stay out of the rain, they can picnic. And as soon as we get that, the quotes in, the Port Authority Board, myself, will decide what we're going to go with. And they're either going to be fabric shades or more like of a stable structure with a metal roof or an asphalt roof. And we feel that that's really important, to upgrade the Marina so that people keep I had mentioned before that we were working on getting a fish cleaning, fish cleaning station down at the Marina, and that's, I guess that's going to be a longer process than what I thought it would be. I spoke to somebody downstate today, and they said that everything is still in the works, and we're still on board, but they haven't decided what the percentage of the grant's going to be, or what the amount that they're going to allow. So, as I get more information on that, I will make sure to pass it on to everybody. We did receive a small grant, approval on a small grant for, it was called the Community Recycling Grant, or the CRGP. Our grant has been approved, so now we're going to take the next steps in the grant process, which is, I had mentioned this once before, about doing our part as far as recycling goes. So, we'll be putting up four, I think, four or five large recycling bins throughout the Marina, and in turn, those, that recycling matter will go into a recycling dumpster so that we can attempt to do our part. The grant that I had originally thought would be a good idea for the Marina, which was the cleanup of the waterway, that did not, that just did not take place. There wasn't enough time to get all of our ducks in a row, there was only like a two-week window. And then, as the process advanced a little farther, we found out that there was a problem with the city administrator, the person who was going to sign things. So, hopefully, we're going to be able to maybe work towards something like that in the near future. I was told that the money might be available, you know, in the upcoming year or two, so hopefully, you know, we can do something with that. And last but not least, I hope everybody received your invitations for the Indiana Tourism Bureau. I mailed them out for all council members, the mayor, the clerk treasurer, and Dan, I do believe you got one too. It's a fun event, and it promotes tourism for the city of Portage and the Porter County. It's a lot of fun, if you could, if you could come just for an hour or so and have a Scotch and a corned beef and cabbage, or a corned beef sandwich.
When is that, Barb?
It's March 12th. It's March 12th, it starts at, we have a board meeting at 4:30, but 5 o'clock will be Lorelei Weimer's presentation. She does a state of tourism presentation. And then, following that, about 5:30 or quarter till 6, that's when everybody kind of just sits down and relaxes and, you know, meet and greet. It's a lot of fun. That's all I have right now.
Thanks, Barb. You're busy down there.
Thank you.
Even though it's so cold out.
Thank you.
Did I miss anybody? If not, is there any unfinished business? No new business? So, petitions or comments by members of the public? If anyone would like to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name, and try to limit it to two to three minutes.
Reverend Michael Cooper, 5455 Clem Road in Portage, which is adjacent to Willow Creek, the actual waterway and not the road. There seemed to be some confusion at last night's planning commission, which during its business approved an auto body repair shop between Aldi's and Willow Creek on Highway 6. That is the actual creek itself. The developers had previously received a variance from the city to encroach on the buffer zone next to Willow Creek in order to accommodate part of the parking lot on their site plan. The placement of an auto pair, auto repair shop next to a watershed with a non-pervious surface extending into the designated watershed buffer zone raises significant environmental concerns that should be addressed before this project is allowed to proceed any further. First, the containment of leaked fuels and fluids created by cars being repaired or waiting to repair, and presumably, some of these cars will have significant body damage, and they will be sitting in the parking lot in the watershed zone. This includes in their processes volatile solvents, cleaners, paints used in the auto body repair shop that could spill and leak directly into a waterway. Spray airborne paint chemicals include chromium, cadmium, and lead. Primer and sealer paints contain alphatic isocyanates, which would be cyanide, cyanide on both ends of a, of a carbon compound, and ethyl acetate, which is commonly known as nail polish remover. Each having a downhill run into Willow Creek. Second, the stormwater runoff from this property would run directly towards Willow Creek. These designated buffer zones, which the city has significantly cut for this project, has the intended effect of providing soil and vegetation between development and waterways to act as a natural filter to reduce the amount of pollutants before they get into the watershed. The city has allowed the developer to bypass a significant portion of the environmental protection zone and place their parking lot within feet of Willow Creek, and doing it at a point on Highway 6 where Willow Creek begins its long journey through the entire length of our city, past our city parks, past our backyards, and into Lake Michigan. May I ask you to place a hold on this variance issued by the city until a full environmental impact and mediation study can be performed, and residents like myself who live along Willow Creek can express any concerns about keeping this valuable waterway through our city clean and safe. And the question I have is, was there any environmental impact study on which the city granted the variance into the Willow Creek buffer zone? And if so, would you please, would you be able to release that?
I wasn't at that meeting. I will do some checking tomorrow, because I wasn't aware of that, so let me check into it and get back.
Okay. And I believe the, I'm not sure what department issued the variance, but yeah, there was a variance that was issued for that property.
BZA.
Was it BZA or was it utilities?
Not sure. Yeah.
AJ, do you know who issued the variance?
I like this guy, he's a good, he's a good plan. The variance to encroach in the buffer yard was approved by the Storm Water Management Board.
Storm. Was there a environmental impact?
I can't speak to it because it happened before I got here.
When did it happen?
Last year.
Last year?
Yes.
Oh, last year. Another last year project, okay.
As, as it relates to the engineering, the site plan was approved last night contingent on engineering review. But, yes, the gentleman is correct that there was an encroachment, a variance approved by the Storm Water Board, and the next step will be with an engineer on staff to review their engineering plans to, to see where we stand with them.
Do you have a site plan?
I have an approved site plan.
Yeah.
Contingent on engineering review.
Okay. I'd like to, I watched the meeting yesterday, and I heard the same thing and was concerned about it. So, I was wanting to see.
Yeah, we'll have those available. I can send a PDF, but, but we do have hard copies in the office.
Okay, I can swing by this week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, AJ.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else who would like to?
Me again.
Hi, Barb.
I'm here for the American Legion Post 260 in Portage. March 18th is our, is our Legion birthday celebration dinner. All council members are, and the mayor are invited, along with all department heads. If you'd like to attend dinners at 6 o'clock. I do the cooking, it's really good. April 22nd, we're also going to do, this will be our second year that we've done, but I will make sure everybody gets this information out, I will get it to the department heads. We're, we do a City of Portage Employee Appreciation Luncheon. It's going to be April 22nd, from 11 o'clock until 2 o'clock. It's all-you-can-eat spaghetti with meat sauce, salad, bread, dessert, coffee, and lemonade. It's our thank you that we do for the City of Portage, all the employees, so I just wanted to.
Very nice.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Kimberly Sims, and I'm actually just here with the concern that I've noticed in the community, in stores or restaurants, or even the movie theater, where I see, like, children kind of off on their own and haven't been a social worker for 25 years. It's kind of alarming to me because they're going to the restrooms alone, 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 sorry. And we have had cases where kids are molested in the restrooms and things, so I'm not sure if there can be announcements made or something in like stores or restaurants where maybe parents can be reminded to keep their eyes on their children at all times, or accompanying them to restrooms, because we do have predators big time with human trafficking. So, that was just something on my heart, and I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Good evening, Joe Hall. I'm the secretary representing Hannah's Hope, a Portage-based nonprofit organization. Mayor, city council, thank you for inviting us tonight. A special thank you to Councilman Gully for the direct invitation, your sponsorship, and your participation in our events. Things like that are what make what we do possible. If you don't know who we are, anyone does not know who we are, we are a nonprofit organization that's been around for about 10 years now. We help children with special needs in the area. There's a park with our name on it, a few blocks away from here, please enjoy that, especially if you have children with special needs. We take a lot of pride in what we do, and we're very honored to be a part of Portage. Most of us that are on the board, Mike Martinez is here as our president. Our Portage's based at one point, or at least we grew up and born and raised here. So, so thank you for your invite, and thank you for all you do for our organization. I'm here tonight to quickly apprise you of a situation or of an incident that we have coming up. We have a, our next event is our Shamrock Shootout Bowling Tournament held in Edmonds in Valparaiso. This is our eighth year, originally started here in Portage at Camelot Lanes when they were still around. The event is March 15th, and it consists of both a nine-pin no-tap tournament in the morning, as well as a family fun bowling kind of extravaganza in the afternoon. We're very privileged that we fill the entire house in Edmonds twice. All of what we do contributes to the things that we do in our communities. In the last year alone, our emergency, our equipment assistance program, we provide equipment to children in need through therapists who can apply for that through various organizations, including Chasing Dreams, I think they walked out a little bit ago, but... but seeing that proclamation tonight just kind of bolsters what we do as an organization. That's just one of many groups that we kind of contribute through our EAP program. Last year alone, through our Lake Porter and Port Counties, we helped nearly 500 children receive therapy equipment that is just vastly needed to improve their life. So with our event coming up, I have flyers for the council members. There's also sponsorship opportunities that are available. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like one of those or would like to see more, hear more about what we do, please look us up, hannahshope.org. And thank you so much for contributing again. Like I said, without you, we couldn't help Hannah, help others, and that's what we're really all about. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah's Hope is one of the phenomenal organizations that we have in the city charities. One of the big things I like to push, and that's, you know, why I do the computer, is just to try and get people involved in the community, whether it be through civic organizations or charities, like the Kiwanis or Exchange Club. And so I'm gonna try and highlight more of that and try and get as many people involved in building up a strong community.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a local veteran, I've been living in Portage over 10 years. And one thing that I wanted to ask, and I may have to direct it to you to Madam Mayor. We used to have a airport shuttle service right across from Dunkin' Donuts. We don't have, we don't have that Super Saver service anymore. And I was wondering, do you know if we would ever get an airport shuttle and when?
AJ's coming back up, we have some news about that. We have some news.
No, it's all good. It's a great question. No, really good question. So I don't know how much I'm able to disclose. But I have had conversations with Shannon Kaiser from Royal Excursion. They are looking in Portage. And I know that he's in an active conversation with a business owner near the intersection of 249 and Interstate 94. And I think that's about all I can disclose at this point. So they are looking in Portage to return that service to our community.
Good.
So other than given the exact location of where they're looking?
Just the intersection, right?
What was that again? I missed it.
Hand hand. Hand hand.
I have one more thing to say, and now I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down. We have got to give our public service people another hand, because they do outstanding work. I see, I see people that, I see when my firemen are coming out of their stations, and they're, they're in pursuit, and people are trying to, what, race them or beat them? Come on, that could be your family member that they're going to see. And same thing with our police officers, I think that they doing a wonderful job. I like, I said, I've been living in Portage for over 10 years, and I haven't heard a bad word about my police department, so. So, you know, that's a good thing, but I think we, we need to appreciate them more.
We do, thank you.
Here with Portage Kiwanis, currently the president. If you like pancakes, we got a deal for you. In conjunction with the Portage Park Department, right here, April 4th, we're doing a breakfast with Easter Bunny. We come meet the Easter Bunny, we're also doing an Easter egg hunt out back at 9:30. The event goes 8:00 to 10:30, all-you-can-eat pancakes for $5, and sausage and drink. You can't beat that anywhere. The Easter egg hunt is for ages 3 to 11. Any questions, you want to donate anything towards the event, please get ahold of Portage Kiwanis on Facebook or, thank you, guys.
Don't leave.
Thank you, Dan.
I would, it was asked of me about the event, although pancake breakfast, $5 is a great deal. The Easter egg hunt is free and open to the public. Yeah, yeah, that's not part of their event, it's separate, so come out for pancakes and definitely come out for the Easter egg hunt.
The event is to raise money for scholarships for Jewish high school seniors with the merit of a child.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? If not, if there are no other matters to be considered, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No one's going to oppose.
You never know.
Thank you, everyone.
It's happened.
Yes.
It has happened.